Right, the YouTube stream is live and Nigel looks like he's joining us now. Yes, right, so for anyone who's been watching the public stream, we did lose connection earlier. What we did, we moved on to some of the private items that were on the agenda. And we're now in a position, we've got the stream back, we can pick up from where we were. We were considering item four on the licensing agenda, which was the statement of licensing policy. Nigel Dermott had been presenting the report and he was just concluding his report. So if Nigel, you could pick up from there and then we can finish off that item and carry on the meeting from there. Thank you. You're on mute Nigel.
Okay. Am I with you now Dan?
Yeah, all good.
Yep, okay. Okay, I got to section 10 in the, in the policy and that relates to operating schedules. This is quite an important part of the policy because in that part of the policy, this is where we start to talk about the licensing objectives and the control measures that are put in. Those control measures are ultimately converted into conditions on the licence. In relation to that, it says in at 10.2, "A statement of licensing policy should not set out any blanket conditions or policy intended to apply to every licence issued by the licensing authority." However, the guidance to the Act states that it's not acceptable for licensing authorities to simply replicate the wording contained within the operating schedule and that any condition attached to a licence should be interpreted in accordance with the applicant's intentions. It goes on further to suggest that any condition will be consistent and substantially the same as that intended by the operating schedule and that any condition should be expressed on a licence or certificate in unequivocable and unambiguous terms. And that they should be clear and that they should be clear to the licence holder, club, enforcement officers and the courts. So with that in mind, now the licensing authority and licensing officers have got quite a bit of experience in writing conditions that would meet legal standards within a magistrate's court. And to that end, this policy introduces the concept of model conditions. Those model conditions are standard wording, although when I say standard, they can be adjusted to meet the circumstances because it's not possible to cater for every style and type of business. So this serves a number of purposes. It helps officers to write consistent conditions, conditions that meet the expectations of the guidance, that they're unequivocal and unambiguous in their terms. And even more so, it assists the licensing subcommittees when deliberating on decisions. If they want to attach conditions, well, there's a basket of model conditions that they can follow and offer some guidance to them and applicants as well when they're putting their applications together. So it's quite an important step. It's not unusual. It's certainly nothing new, but we've never had anything like that. But I think it would really assist licensing officers and the licensing subcommittee. So when we look at operating schedules, we then move through the various licensing objectives. You'll see that some of the control measures suggested might be a little bit repetitive, i.e. continual mention of training. But in our experience with applicants, it's right to, even if we repeat ourselves, to repeat what we're saying because otherwise applicants come back to us and the the comment is, if it's not there, they're not expected to put anything. So if it's there and it's repeated, then certainly there's no harm done. So there's quite a bit then in the policy in relation to the licensing objectives. There's confirmation on the position regarding petrol stations and garages that sell alcohol and ensuring that alcohol is not the primary use of the business. Late night refreshments, the council have, or the licensing authority, have the ability to create certain exemptions. And I mentioned that at paragraph 10.33 because that has been considered previously and not felt suitable that Chelmsford City Council should have any exemptions in relation to late night refreshments in the policy. The late night levy is something that we have in Chelmsford as a matter of choice and that is authorised under the Police Reform and Social Responsibility Act. And that is a small levy, raises a small sum of money, but it does fund the SOS bus support pub watch and their DISC application, which helps to keep banned people's out of premises and supports the best bar none project. Then we have a section of online applications and some of the additional material in here is because over a period of time, sometimes the police will question some of the decisions, particularly decisions around tacit consent. Tacit consent being consent given in the absence of an applicant being told they couldn't have something. It doesn't extend to every type of application, but it sets out where we as a licensing authority stand in respect of tacit consent. The section on temporary event notices, previously there was quite an extensive section in there that offered guidance that can already be found online from the Home Office and Department of Culture, Media and Sport. So it was rather felt unnecessary to repeat something that could be found somewhere else. But there are some significant some significant advice given to applicants around how we interpret issues around working days and when is a notice given and what is a late temporary event notice. So it just, it just gives a little bit more information that they couldn't obtain anywhere else. Designated premises supervisors being removed from a premises licence. And that is in the case of community premises where they have that ability. That's a new section that we've added. A section with regards to representations and in particular representations that are made by the public where they wished their personal details to be withheld. That's made quite clear that the licensing authority accepts that in exceptional circumstances, a local resident may be reluctant for their personal details to be disclosed to the applicant because of fears of intimidation or violence. And they must be real fears and not just, not just in their mind. And under those conditions, we can withhold personal data. But otherwise, if you're going to make a representation, make yourself known. The structure of a licensing committee. Hearings, a little bit about hearings, a little bit more than that that you would find in the regulations. And the administration of the system, a little bit in there referring to the delegation of functions. Who's going to make what decisions about what type of applications and processes and that can be found at appendix C. Little bit more information in there, section 14 with regards to review applications and how that will change. And also summary reviews, these are the immediate ones because of serious crime being committed on the premises that can be made and applied for only by the police. There's a little bit of guidance around that. So that's for the information of the police. And apart from appeals, we've then got a section about the suspension of licences for the non-payment of annual fees. And there's an absolute legal duty on the council to suspend a licence where the annual fee is not paid. It's not a question of if. However, the, the Act does give us some flexibility. It doesn't say when we've got to suspend it. So certainly currently during the Covid pandemic, we are making the most of that opportunity and setting it as late as possible rather than making it onerous on people. So a bit more information in there about the suspensions. So the bit that I would recommend for reading, which is new, the totally new section, is the background reading in respect of the model conditions. I think you'll find that they're self-explanatory. They might on the face of it appear to be a bit polacy as opposed to covering issues around environmental health. But that is where the majority of representations and consultation around premises licences generally tend to lie, the issues around crime and disorder. And there are some added ones with taking environmental issues into account, noise, litter and disruption to local residents. So unless any members have got any questions of me, I would commend the papers suitable for wider publication and consultation with the public and the statutory agencies that we have to consult with.
Thank you Nigel. Yes, just, just, there are a couple of people to ask questions and just to remind you, under 3.1 and 3.2, we are being asked to provide initial feedback and guidance prior to the formal consultation. That's the legislative process and that includes any suggestions for additional consultees that we would like to suggest and that all are actually in appendix B. A copy of the draft policy will be put on the council's website anyway and published.
It will.
And if, if we agree and this goes forward, then it will be presented to Cabinet and then descend before council. So this is, this is the initial a chance for us to have input into this and then it'll obviously go to, go through to, to the other committees. And councillor Roberts, you had your hand up and then councillor Davidson.
Yeah, it's only a question about paragraph 13.1. Using a subcommittee of three members, well, all the, all the subcommittee means I've been, have all had four. I'm just wondering which is right, four or three or is that a change?
The minimum has always been three. The reason I normally get four of you booked in is in case someone drops out.
That would have been my answer then.
Okay, thank you. So you're a welcome addition councillor Roberts.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Davidson?
Evening Nigel, could I just ask about section 4.5, that cumulative impact policy?
Cumulative impact, yes.
Yeah, so whereas the council has decided that there's no evidence base or justification to consider one. I just wondered how you'd reached that decision and is there, how would we know whether we would need to consider one? What would be the trigger factors for that?
That would be a considerable amount of research, looking at crime figures in conjunction with Essex Police, looking at complaints and environmental impacts. It's, it's, it's not a common policy to be found around the country. It's usually found in the larger areas like Westminster, Manchester, Liverpool, the bigger urban areas where the night time economy is quite significant. But this is a policy that is dynamic. This, the decision not to have a cumulative impact is based on the fact that we've never, we've, the council have never felt the need to have one and there has been some local discussion and I do emphasise local discussion, but this is a dynamic policy that is reviewed every five years. And the revisions can be made at any point if needed within that five years. So if there were significant changes within the city centre that the members felt that a cumulative impact might be needed, then we could embark on that data collection and analysis of what was occurring in our town centre. The general feeling at the moment nationally is that where we have got cumulative impact policies because of the Covid pandemic, a lot of, a lot of the councils who are going through the same process with their policy now are removing those cumulative impact policies because we don't quite know what sits on the horizon with our night time economy and whether it ever will come back to pre-pandemic levels, certainly for a substantial number of years. And a cumulative impact policy could have a significantly negative impact on business in the city centre.
Okay, thank you. You don't think we need any more wording to explain anything now? That, that should be fine as it is. Is that fairly common? That wording?
Yeah, otherwise it leaves the door open to to legal representatives to suggest that perhaps we could consider there might be one necessary. We're quite unequivocal in saying not at the moment, but the door is always open. It is a policy that can be reviewed at any time if you did feel that that was necessary and the data supported that. That's something that we could review at any time during its five year life.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you Nigel. Are there any other comments? Otherwise I would take it that you're happy that this document goes out to consultation and it comes before Cabinet. Okay, lovely. Thank you very much then. So that's that agenda item. We are now going, thank you Nigel.
Thank you.
Daniel, did you want to say something?
No, I'll let you finish first.
Well, I was going to go on to the last item that we had finished. Did you want to say something first?
Yeah, we need to kind of acknowledge that we're moving into, back into regulatory committee.
Okay, that's right. So we are now going back to the regulatory committee item that we couldn't complete earlier. And that is for an agenda item five, which was the application for an increase in the fares charged by Hackney carriage vehicles. And we will be taking a recorded vote on this. So who have we got that will be?
We just need to do the, accept the minutes of the last regulatory committee.
Oh yes, sorry, we didn't get to do that, did we? And so the minutes from the last meeting held on the 11th of June, was everybody happy with those? And as far as I'm concerned, they're a true record. If anybody isn't happy, please speak. Okay, thank you very much.
And I'll quickly just, we've got the person who put in the tariff request, Terry Michelle's in the lobby. I'll just add him into the meeting as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
He's now in the meeting as well. So we can now move on to that item.
Okay, so agenda item five, the application for an increase in the fares charged by Hackney carriage vehicles. And Terry? Terry, could you unmute your microphone?
Maybe if we get Nigel to do his report first, then we'll try and get Terry in after.
Okay, could you do your, do the report please Nigel? Thank you.
Okay, welcome back. Thank you. I'm glad that Terry Mitchell is in, in the lobby or hopefully here with us because he is the petitioner and provided a lot of the information, some of which can be fairly technical. And I might not have the expertise to be able to provide some of the answers, particularly if you have any questions around metres and distances, et cetera. The purpose of the, the presentation here is to consider a request submitted by Mr Terry Michelle for an increase in the Hackney carriage fares. It's recommended that the requested fare be considered and members determine whether or not to approve the fares and tariffs that have been suggested at appendix B. Should the fares and tariffs be approved, the director of public places be authorised to take the necessary steps to implement the changes provided that no objections to the proposals are received, and that's in respect of consultation. Or if any objections are received to the proposed changes following the consultation period, that the decision be referred to the next meeting of this committee in September, 10th of September. Members are also asked to consider that during the recalibration process, if agreed, they adopt a policy to have Hackney carriage metres changed to calendar metres to avoid changing tariffs mid-journey and accept a certificate from the calibration engineer in lieu of the current method of manual checking by licensing officers following installation or change of the vehicle. That's even more pertinent now because it saves licensing officers having to accompany drivers in their vehicle, drive it around an established route to calibrate the, the metre and make sure that it's working. Something that didn't exist when we first had this prepared. The background and introduction is that the council is the licensing authority of Hackney carriage vehicles under section 65 of the Local Government Miscellaneous Provisions Act 1976 and that the council may fix the fares and all other charges for the hire of a Hackney carriage. On the 9th of February, Mr Terry Michelle submitted an emailed request for an increase in the Hackney carriage fares. The application together with supporting documents is attached at appendix A. The existing scale of charges was approved by the Licensing and Regulatory Committee on the 7th of July 2016 and it was implemented in the August of the same year. The existing fares together with the proposed increases are set out in appendix B. This matter obviously would have been brought before members had it not have been for the Covid pandemic. The changes to the motoring retail prices indices that have occurred in December 2018 and December 2019 to March 2016, I think that probably should say 2019 are shown at appendix C. I'm sure that that would become clear at appendix C. The table of fares for England, which is published by the Private Hire and Taxi Monthly Magazine in their February 2020 edition, shows that based on a two mile fare, the tariff one charge varied nationally from £11.40 down at Heathrow to £4.40 in Pendle in Lancashire with the Essex County area average of being £6.22. There's a misprint there. And if you have a look at appendix D1, you will see that that is depicted in a graphic representation of fares spread across the county along with a selection of regional fares in neighbouring counties. The national average is around about £5.98. The current Chelmsford fare is £6.70 and the proposed changes would increase this to £7.10. The table is shown at appendix D. Prior to the consideration of this proposal, Chelmsford was placed 49, position 49 out of 363 licensing authorities nationally in a table of fares published in the February 2020 edition of the Private Hire and Taxi Monthly Magazine. If the proposals are agreed, Chelmsford would move to position 20 in that table of fares. This does assume that since the table was published, there have been no other fare changes by other local authorities. I'm not aware of too many of late. In establishing the proposal for the requested tariff increase this year, Chelmsford Taxi Association Limited have been mindful of members' previous comments and of canvassed members of the taxi trade to determine the level of support for the proposal. A petition completed by members of the trade was submitted with the supporting information provided by Terry Michelle and of the 70 signatures obtained, all are in support of the proposal with the exception of one who felt they could not agree with the increase at tariff two. A number of these signatures are from the same proprietor who operates several Hackney carriages within Chelmsford. Members will note the retail price indices used by the National Statistics Office to cover the period December 2018 to 2019, December 2019 and they are appended to this report at appendix C. They show that overall moting expenditure did not increase during this period. However, general motoring expenditure costs fell, fell slightly by minus 0.1% along with the cost of new vehicles which fell by 1.5%. However, petrol and oil costs have risen by 0.4%, as did ongoing maintenance costs increased by 2.7% as well as tax and insurance by a significant increase of 12.8%. Although these figures are provided as a guide, it should be noted that they do not relate specifically to the taxi trade. And ongoing insurance and maintenance costs will be higher than average, the average vehicle, when applied to a taxi fleet. Factored into the proposal account is also a taken of the average earnings increase since 2016. If members agree to improve the increase in fares and changes to tariff bands, the proposed tariff will need to be published in a notice in a local newspaper for a minimum period of 14 days to allow objections to be received. It is proposed that the advert be placed in the Essex Chronicle. If there was any agreement by members, a copy of the notice would also be available at the council offices for inspection free of charge at all reasonable hours. Any objections or relevant recommendations received during the 14 day period may be submitted for further consideration at a further meeting or if approved by members and unopposed, the officers oversee the necessary arrangements to put this new tariff in place. During this timeframe, there are a number of taxi metres that would be unable to be calibrated and required to be changed. Obviously, there's a cost implication for that. It's estimated that about 30 to 40, and that's from our records, will be affected and would need replacement. Members are also requested to consider a policy change requiring all metres to be calibrated against the calendar. Most current metres can be adjusted with a few that would need replacement. No further charges will be made of vehicles affected by any tariff increase if their metre has been upgraded. Modern metres are calibrated. They're difficult to tamper with other than by authorised engineers. The practice of licensing officers having to manually check and seal metres, we feel can be dispensed with now because of the improvements in technology and that would save time and that could be replaced through the production of an approved certificate by the metre installer. Members are requested to consider this change to our working practices. Members are advised that this year, the proposed changes have once again been presented in yards and not metres as in previous years. This is because the taxi metres are actually calibrated in yards and not metres, which has the potential to lead to very minor inaccuracies when the fares are set. Using yards as the primary unit of distance will avoid this issue. The difference in distance of previous years is to enable the tariff card to reflect prices in round figures. And that's shown at appendix F, the proposed tariff card to be displayed in Hackney carriage vehicles if the increase was approved. Since this report has been presented before you, I would just highlight that due to the pandemic, we, with the licensing authority, have provided a concession to the trade allowing vehicles that are 12 years old to go on until they're 13 year old. The price of petrol has been lower in the last six months and MOTs have been extended by six months. We've got local arrangements with the taxi trade to give a little bit of flexibility around mechanical inspections. Pretty much in line with the MOT extension, although not entirely because safety is a priority. We've also got an arrangement with the trade for where operators are in particular financial difficulty by allowing them to sawn the vehicle, statutory off-road notice and remove the insurance to make a bit of a saving at a time when trade quite honestly has been quite diabolical for them. And then of course there is the support from central government for small businesses. So the options in determining this application, members are advised that the following options are available to them. If supported, to grant the application in full for an increase in the Hackney carriage fares and changes to the tariffs as applied for. If not supported, to refuse the application for an increase in Hackney carriage fares and/or any amendments to the tariffs. If the application is supported, to allow the director of public places to agree a commencement date for metres to be replaced, recalibrated and a suitable date establishment established for implementation of any revised tariff. And obviously that would take place after any formal consultation and perhaps further referral back to members. And also to inform the applicant that members would consider receiving an amended application If that was what you felt was the appropriate course of action. But whether the tariff increase is supported or not, we would ask members to consider anyway. A change to policy in having all taxi metres set to calendar. Uh, or replaced to allow metres to be set to calendar and that could be on a date of your choosing. Uh, and in addition, a change to policy, allowing certificates to be submitted by the metre calibration engineer. As evidence of conformity and remove the, uh, need for officers to test the metre manually. Along an identified route. We do have a number of arrangements because of Covid in, um, that try and reset the clock, if you like. In terms of, uh, vehicle examinations, deferred payments, uh, sawn vehicles, et cetera. And to get everything all reset by October the 7th. Why October the 7th? That's the 30th of September plus seven days. So if there's any problems with getting, uh, vehicle inspections, spaces at freighter house, which have not suffered at all throughout this pandemic. Then October the 7th seems to be our magic, uh, date on which we're trying to, uh, uh, get things back to normal. If there is ever going to be such a thing. So I think if there are any questions, then the technical questions Terry should be able to help you with. I don't think you need me to go through the corporate implications. I don't think there are any relevant ones there. Um, and the appendices are there for you to read, so.
Thank you very much. And thank you. Um, Terry, did you want to add anything to that?
I'm hoping you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent, good, good. I've got a few words just to say, which is similar to the information you've got there. Plus a few extra words more relevant to the present time, if that's okay.
Yes, that's fine, go ahead.
No worries. Um, yeah, good evening. Um, can only see a couple of faces there. Um, the format which hopefully you've got in front of you, which is looking at how the tariffs are calculated. Compared from 2016 through to 2020 is a standard format which we've used for about the last 10 years now. Um, so hopefully, um, it's all sort of, you know, quite clear and can be easily understood and what have you. Any problems, obviously ask me now or at another time and that's no worries. Um, as I think Nigel has stated, there's been no change in the tariffs in Chelmsford for four years now. Um, at least four years it will be, uh, if this one is granted. I think some of the figures that Nigel's got about cost of, um, insurance, cost of motor and cost of fuel. Only I think relate back to October or November 2019 to present time in 2020. Obviously really they need to look back from sixteen through to twenty, because in four years fuel has gone up. You know, it's gone up then back down again, obviously at the moment. Uh, but insurance motion costs over that four years, I think are slightly higher than some of the figures possibly sort of stated there tonight. The territory increase, the increase, if it is granted, and Nigel did mention, I think, would move us up to joint seventeenth now in the country. Um, it needs to be pointed out that the only measurement that they actually categorise them then from high to low. Is two miles on tariff one, the day tariff. If you look at two miles on tariff two, three, four or 10 miles. Every other county looks completely different as well. So that's the one particular way the private hire magazine sorts the data to actually analyse it. Okay? Yeah, as Nigel said, we had canvassed the trades and when we did this in sort of, you know, January, February time. Everybody was basically for it apart from one person who was slightly concerned about tariff two. Nigel, I believe, did on WhatsApp ask some of the members if they were still willing to support this increase. Um, nobody, I think, um, really had a big issue. One guy said not at the moment. Um, not at this particular time. Well, there's never a good time. And I can assure you, our trade isn't in a good place at this time at the moment, as a lot of the country isn't. One other member, I think, had another counter suggestion of changing yardage and changing percentages. Um, I can tell you now, his proposed increase was going to be 12%. Um, he's a local private hire, um, company who's apparently changed his fares twice in the last four months anyway. So what he's going to do with Hackneys, I really don't quite understand. Yeah, just a couple of words. The tax rate in Chelmsford, um, as is the rest of the country. Has suffered massively due to this horrible Covid outbreak and continues to do so. All our costs to run businesses remain the same basically, um, but the work has massively diminished. Probably to about twenty to twenty-five percent of previous levels. Um, hopefully with pubs, restaurants slowly starting to open, um, and a bit of customer, you know, consumer confidence starting to return. Things may improve. Um, they need to drastically. The new normal, whatever that new normal is, and I think I heard Nigel mention it there as well. And we see it on the news every day, is not going to be what it was before. We know that, we can see that. Um, and, and just another little sub point, a number of, of drivers out there, cab owners and that. Have now taken on part-time jobs, delivering for Iceland, delivering for Deliveroo. Um, you'll see a queue of taxis, I think, in McDonald's in Springfield in the evenings, doing deliveries, um, for the takeaway sector and that. That's how desperate things have become. Um, and one of my colleagues, I know for a fact, three weeks ago, he sat for seven hours. And didn't even get a job off of one of the taxi ranks in Chelmsford. Um, things are very bad. Um, any increase on, on what we do earn would be gratefully received. So, you know, fingers crossed and go from there. Obviously, any questions, please, um, fire back at me.
Lovely, thank you very much. And members, have, have you got any questions that you would like to put to, um, uh, Mr Michelle or to Nigel? Um, councillor Roberts, I've got your hand up.
I would like to have a question. Um, uh, yeah, Nigel said, um, about consultation, he didn't mention website, does it? They wouldn't have ca- uh, in, go on the website, a consultation exercise. It just seems strange that we're not using the web for consultation.
Nigel?
Hang on, I'm just trying to get my machine to work, sorry. Um, yes, of course, yes, we will be, uh, advertising on the website as well as in the local paper. We'll use all the means available to us. I think technology is definitely the way forward. Um, and Terry referred to the use of WhatsApp throughout this pandemic. That has been most useful. Uh, and if I can just add a little bit of information on that, I think there's something like a hundred and sixty taxi drivers on WhatsApp. And he's quite right, I did put out, um, uh, some feelers to see what the current thoughts were in respect of the tariff increase. Uh, and there were only those two comments that Terry correctly referred to. So probably considerably more keeping quiet there.
Thank you.
Okay, um, are there any other questions? Um, if not, um, I suggest we vote. So the vote will be, anybody else with their hands up? No, the vote will be, um, to grant the application for an increase, um, to the, in the Hackney carriage fares and changes to the tariffs. Applied for, um, or to refuse. So if you're voting, you're voting for, um, to grant the application. Um, and then we can, we can discuss, um, the change to policy in the, um, metres set to calendar. And allowing the certificates to be submitted by the metre calibration engineer. Um, but I suggest we vote, um, and we're voting for or against the rise in the, um, the increase in the fares.
Uh, thanks Chair. What I'll do is, is run through each councillor by name in alphabetical order. If you could then just indicate if you're for. I will make a note and tally up at the end. And the first one is councillor Ambor.
Four.
Uh, thank you, councillor Ashley.
Four.
Thank you, uh, councillor Clark.
Four.
Thank you, councillor Davidson.
Four.
Thank you, councillor Friscono.
Four.
Thank you, councillor Hughes.
Four.
Thank you, councillor John. I'll come back. Uh, councillor Jones?
Four.
Thank you, councillor Lee?
Four.
Thank you, councillor Mascot?
Four.
Thank you, councillor Mullane?
Four.
Thank you, councillor Rijes?
Four.
Thank you, and councillor Roberts?
Four.
Thank you, I'll just try councillor John again.
Yes, four, thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so that was, that's four.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so, um. For the, um, change to the policy in having the metres set to calendar. And the change to policy allowing the certificates to be submitted, um, by the engineer instead of, to remove the need for our officers. Um, has anybody got any objections or are you happy for those to go forward? If you've got an objection, um, then put your hand up or make yourself known. Okay, that's great. I move then, um, that, um, the change to policy is having the metres set to calendar. Um, and the change to policy is allowing the certificates to be submitted by the metre calibration engineer. Um, which will remove the need for officers to test. Um, also on here, we have got, um, allowed, to allow the director of public places to agree. A commencement date for metres to be replaced, recalibrated and a suitable date established for implementation of any revised tariff. Um, I, would I move that we let, that, that, that we do that as soon as possible? Um, has anybody got any comments or would anybody like to say anything different to that? Okay, so we, we move forward with that as soon as, as soon as possible. Okay, thank you very much. Um, could all members, um, that, that, that brings to a conclusion. And the business that we have for, um, both licensing and regulatory meetings tonight. But could all members please stay on the call? We have, uh, some, a little bit of unfinished business from earlier. Um, could you please stay on, um, while others leave and, um, while the licensing officers leave. And while the, um, live stream is ended, please, could you just stay on? Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks a lot. Cheers.